Please report out from closed session.
Today in closed session, the Board authorized County Council to retain the law firm of, well, what will become Olson Remco to defend the county in the matter of BNSF Railroad Company versus Alameda County, United States District Court, Northern District of California, case number nineteen dash C V dash seventy-two thirty. In addition, in closed session, the Board acknowledged and accepted the retirement of our Fire Chief Dave Roca and appointed him as the interim Fire Chief as a retired annuitant. He will retire effective the end of this year.
Congratulations, Chief. We will now go to the only item on the agenda. County Administrator, did you want to read part of the, your letter?
Members of the Board, we will be reading the staff report into the record, and that will be followed by your Board opening a public hearing, hearing from your consultants, and then opening up for public testimony.
Okay.
So the item before your Board today is to approve the disposition agreement between the County of Alameda and Coliseum Way Partners to sell the county's undivided half interest in the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum complex. I'm going to read the recommendations upfront before we read the staff report, and that is that your Board hold a public hearing pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-two-two-oh-one, that you adopt a resolution making findings of economic opportunity pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-two-two-oh-one, approving the disposition agreement between the county and Coliseum Way Partners to sell the county's undivided half interest in the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum complex, and authorizing the Board President to sign that agreement. The Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum complex, as you know, consists of the land and improvement known as the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Arena and adjacent parking lots. The complex located at seven thousand Coliseum Way does not include the property commonly identified as the Malibu Lot. The complex is currently owned jointly by the City of Oakland and the county as tenants in common and operated by the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Authority, commonly referred to as the Joint Powers Authority, established by the city and county to finance improvements to the complex and to manage the complex on behalf of the city and county. There is no written tenancy in common agreement between the city and county governing their respective rights as co-owners of the complex. The complex is currently burdened by two bonded indentures, license agreements with the Oakland Athletics, Oakland Raiders, Golden State Warriors, and Outfront Media. There is also a facilities management agreement among the JPA, the city, the county, and AEG facilities. It is the understanding of the parties that the bonds cannot be de-eased without the city's approval. The city's interest in defeasance of the bonds is unknown. However, CWP and the county wish to enter into an agreement independent of the city's current stance on the status of the bonds. Since nineteen sixty-four, the county and the city have jointly owned and operated the Coliseum complex to host three major professional sports teams, the Oakland Raiders, the Oakland Athletics, and the Golden State Warriors, as well as other sports and entertainment events over the years. Most recently, as you know, the Golden State Warriors moved to a new facility in San Francisco, and the Oakland Raiders are scheduled to move to Las Vegas for the 2020 season. The Oakland Athletics are the only remaining team on site and are making plans to build a new ballpark at Howard Terminal closer to downtown Oakland by the time their current lease expires in twenty twenty-four or soon thereafter. The county and city are jointly responsible for the bond debts and other operating losses suffered by the JPA in hosting these sports tenants. Over the years, the city and county made payments to the JPA to pay bond debt service and cover the JPA losses totaling millions of dollars. Since about twenty fifteen, the county has been attempting to divest itself from these expenses and get out of the sports business altogether by offering to sell its half-interest to the city. Multiple meetings and discussions were held with the city until early twenty nineteen, when further discussions were ended by the city. In late fall of twenty eighteen, the Oakland Athletics presented the county an unsolicited offer to buy the county's share for the cost of the remaining balance of the bond debt. This followed the city entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the Athletics. On April twenty-third, twenty nineteen, the county and the Athletics entered into a non-binding term sheet to begin discussions for a disposition agreement to sell the county's fifty percent interest to the Athletics. CWP is an affiliate of the Athletics. The property is not considered surplus since the original purpose for sports and entertainment will remain for the foreseeable future, and the property is required for the lease revenue bond structure used to finance certain improvements on the complex. The Athletics will continue to play through the twenty twenty-four season and potentially beyond until the new ballpark slated for construction at Howard Terminal is ready. The transfer of the county's interest will create an economic opportunity as defined by state law under Government Code Section five-two-two-oh-one. The county retained economic and planning systems to provide an independent economic and financial assessment of the proposed transaction to determine its consistency with the requirements of the Government Code Section. EPS determined the land sale will result in greater than fifteen percent increase in property taxes to all taxing entities when the property is reassessed for the sale price, thus meeting the definition of economic opportunity in Government Code Section fifty-two-two-oh-two-point-two-B. The county strongly supports affordable housing in all residential developments and recently sponsored a five-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar general obligation bond passed by over two-thirds of the voters. Any future developments on the property will be governed by the requirements of the city, which also has made a strong commitment to affordable housing. CWP and the Athletics have publicly expressed strong support for affordable housing in any future developments of the complex. This transaction demonstrates the county's strong desire to assure the Athletics remain in Oakland. With this divestment, the county will be better able to focus on its core mission to provide safety net services in healthcare, public assistance, and public protection. This sale will not prompt a change in the use of the facility, and no specific development plans for the property are proposed by CWP. The complex will remain as a sports and entertainment complex as the Athletics' license will not expire until at least after the twenty twenty-four baseball season. Depending on the progress of the new ballpark, the Athletics may extend their license agreement at the complex beyond that time. The arena will continue to host concerts, other entertainment programs, and minor sports events. Although development of the site may be contemplated in the future, the scope of that development is speculative at this time and not within the control of the county. Any proposed development would be subject to the Coliseum Area Specific Plan adopted by the city in twenty fifteen. The city prepared and certified an environmental impact report for the Coliseum Specific Plan. Depending upon the scope of any proposed development proposal, additional environmental review may be necessary, but that cannot be determined at this time. For those reasons, the county has concluded that the disposition agreement itself is not subject to sequoia review, since it can be determined with certainty that the disposition agreement and the actions contemplated therein will not result in a change of use of the complex or a change in the physical environment. Community benefit requirements will be imposed by the city on any new development contemplated in the future. With regard to the disposition of the county's interest in the complex, the county is agreeing to sell and convey the county interest to CWP, and CWP is agreeing to acquire and purchase the county interest from the county within thirty days after all of the conditions to closing have been met. These conditions include defeasement, refunding, or repayment of the bonds, so that the encumbrances related to the bonds are removed from the complex. The purchase price for the county interest is eighty-five million dollars payable to the county in cash and in installments in accordance with the schedule of payments. The purchase price reflects a fair, equitable, and current market price for the purchase of the county interest pursuant to the terms of this agreement. In addition to paying the purchase price, CWP will assume all of the county's share of the operating costs of the complex immediately upon CWP's commitment, which currently is approximately five million dollars per year. Within five business days of the effective date of the disposition agreement, CWP will deposit with the escrow holder the sum of five million dollars as security for the performance of CWP's obligations under the agreement. The deposit will remain in escrow during the due diligence period of a hundred and ninety days. During the due diligence period, CWP will conduct certain investigations of the property. Additionally, the county and CWP will obtain a report addressing certain issues related to the bonds. If the report on the bonds indicates that the purchase of the complex by CWP could cause the bonds to become taxable, the county may terminate this agreement, and one million dollars of the deposit will be released to the county. The remainder of the deposit will be released to CWP. Conversely, if CWP, prior to the expiration of the due diligence period, decides to terminate the agreement, one million dollars of the deposit will be released to the county as liquidated damages. If CWP, after expiration of the due diligence period, elects to proceed with the purchase of the county interest, the deposit shall be credited towards the first payment to come due of the purchase price. The schedule of payments is listed, starting with the commitment date and ending on January thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. The expecting closing date shall be within thirty days of CWP's payment in full of the purchase price and the satisfaction of other conditions, at which time the county will cause a quitclaim deed, an assignment, and a bill of sale to be executed, delivered, and recorded, and the county interest shall transfer to and fully vest in CWP. During the purchase term, CWP will cooperate with the Athletics in the Athletics' efforts subject to the rights and approval of Major League Baseball and its Commissioner of Baseball and the cooperation of the city to have the Athletics remain in Oakland in a venue satisfactory to the Athletics and Major League Baseball. If the Athletics elect to relocate to a venue outside of Oakland during the purchase term, then all unpaid annual purchase price components shall become immediately due and payable to the county within one hundred and eighty days of the Athletics' announcement of their relocation out of Oakland. During the purchase term, CWP may nominate individuals for the appointment of the two county-appointed, non-elected members of the JPA Commission whenever a vacancy or other appointment opportunity arises, provided that the Board of Supervisors shall retain all discretion to make appointments to the JPA Commission. There are no financial adjustments to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year county budget required as a result of this action. Any financial adjustments in future years will be funded from the proceeds of the sale of the Coliseum complex. That concludes the staff report, and the recommendation is that you now open the public hearing and hear from your economic consultants.
There you go. Move second to open the public hearing. No objection. The item is now open to the public. I have several speakers in no particular order.
Superintendent Vaya, we have representatives from the Economic Consulting Firm that would like to make some brief comments.
Economic Complaint Systems, you want to step up real quick? All right.
Thank you. My name is Jason Moody. I'm a Managing Principal at Economic and Planning Systems. It's retained by the county to do an independent economic consultant, economic analysis consistent with the requirements of Government Code five-two-two-oh-one. Essentially, I'll go over my findings really quickly. They were pretty much consistent with the staff report, but essentially what we looked at was the cost of the sale to the county. We looked at the value of the property. We looked at the purchase price, and then we looked at economic opportunities resulting from the sale. The cost of the sale to the county is really associated with the documentary transfer tax, which is about two-point-one million dollars. The county purchased the property in nineteen sixty-four for about, its share for about five-hundred-thousand dollars. With regard to the value of the property, we looked at a two thousand and sixteen Cushman-Wakefield appraisal report, and we adjusted that value up to two thousand and nineteen dollars, and it came out, the county's share came out to about eighty-two thousand, eighty-two million dollars, which is below the amount of the proposed purchase price. Finally, with regard to the economic opportunities analysis, we focused on the increase in property tax revenue that would occur from the transaction, and that increase is primarily attributable to the fact that the property is now exempt, and it wouldn't be upon the sale. In addition, we would expect that the assessment would be more or less equivalent to the purchase price of eighty-five million, and so that would result in increase in property taxes of around, conservatively, of around eighty-five percent above what is currently being accrued to the county. So you would experience a significant increase in property taxes as a result of the transaction. So those are the primary findings that are required as part of the Government Code five-two-two-oh-one, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Superintendent Miley?
Yes. Oops, since he's at the mic initially, so the purchase price is eighty-five million, and the base is eighty-two million, so it's like a three-million-dollar above, you know. The county's not selling it below what it's appraised at.
That's correct.
In terms of what we would, in terms of the effectiveness of this deal.
That's correct.
And I think that's the only question I had of you. Then with the county administrator or with county council, so the scheduled payments, last payment is scheduled for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so the quitclaim deed would be made within thirty days of that date?
So the quitclaim deed is required thirty days after two elements are achieved, that is the full payment of the purchase price and the satisfaction of the bond debt. So if those coincide with that last date, it's all about when will the bonds be paid that would then be the triggering element. So we are looking at February of twenty, January, February, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. And is there any penalty or any reason why if the As would decide to prepay and speed this up, could that be accomplished? I'm not saying they will, but I'm just saying if CWP were to do that.
If there were a default, for example, as the Board Letter and the CAO indicated, if they left the city of Oakland, the As relocated, and they do have to advance the payment of the entire eighty-five million dollars, but that does not accelerate the payment of the bond debt, and that would not then require us to transfer the title, we would have all of their monies, and we would then continue to pay the bond debt, and once the bond debt was paid, then we would transfer title.
Okay. Well, thanks for answering that question, but that wasn't what I was getting at. What I was getting at, suppose the As want to pay the entire amount off sooner, before January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Is that authorized? There's no prepayment penalty or downside, is there?
So the deal is structured, does not allow them, other than that in that one instance, to accelerate their payment?
Okay. Okay. That's the answer to that question. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, just want to make sure it's clear, so because the use of the property will continue to be sports and entertainment, there's no sequoia requirement because we're not doing any change in use or any development or anything like that. This is just purely the tenant that's there, the Oakland As will continue to play baseball there, continue to be a facility arena for entertainment, et cetera. So we're not doing any type of development deal here. This is just purely a sale of our interest.
That's correct, and we believe it does not trigger sequoia. So Rose, I do want to go back to your last question regarding the accelerated payments. If we were in a position to early defees the bonds, then there is an obligation for them to advance, to accelerate their payments as well, to coordinate with that effort. But that's the only instance, when we, the county, wish to prepay or early pay the bond debt, that then we could accelerate their payment obligation.
And what would need to occur for us to de-feas the bonds earlier?
We would need, we would need cooperation with our joint obligor, the city, as well as the JPA, who is the actual issuer of those bonds.
Okay, thank you. So I know the President's going to call some speakers, and I'll have some comments afterwards, but I do want to at least initially say, appreciate the work that the staff's done on this, the county administrators' team and county council, for getting us to this point. It's been a long, long journey since April, but it's been even longer over the last five years or thereabout, so thank you for your work on this.
Any other questions for Mr. Moody or staff before we go to the public? Thank you, Mr. Moody. Okay. I'll call out three names, and then we have three minutes each. Please come on up. Carl Chan, Jennifer Fothergill, and Betsy Barrows.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Chan. I'm here to represent the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, and also as a resident of the Alameda County. And I also want to say thank you on behalf of many of those benefited for all your work, many nonprofit organizations, and also people from my community. And, you know, what a great year that you have done in twenty nineteen. And we also have, you know, wonderful work relationship with the city, County Administrator Susan, and also our Fire Chief. So it's good to see all of you here, and I'll say thank you. And I try to keep it short because I still need to buy my Christmas gift for my wife, so I want to say thank you to all of you, because you also bring us an early Christmas gift, and, you know, the decision we're making is going to be so wonderful, because you're actually using this, the resources that you have, and enter some better resources, and which will benefit many, many people here in Alameda County. So I think this is a wonderful work that you're doing and making this wonderful decision. So here, I'm here on behalf of our community and Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to support fully in that decision we're making for this, what they're doing and selling this piece of property, and also utilizing the resources. So I'm here to also commenting, you guys are doing such a good job. And also, I'm bringing a message from the Chinatown Chamber of Commerce. Each year, we will have our Really New Year Bazaar, and this Really New Year is coming in early. It's going to be on January twenty-fifth, but our bazaar's actually taking place two weeks before. On January eleventh, I would like to invite all of you, I know Keith always been here and Norma and many of you, so I hope that you can join us in Oakland Chinatown on Saturday and Sunday, January eleventh and twelfth. So I hope to see you here, there, at the, and also I'd like to invite all of you to be joining us. So once again, on behalf of our community, I want to say thank you to all of you for all the job well done. Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. Jennifer, and then Betsy.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Fothergill, and I'm from the Northern California Chapter of the National Electrical Contractors Association, also known as NORCalNICA. NORCalNICA represents over seventy-five Alameda electrical contractors, all of whom hire local electricians who reside in Alameda County and are contributors to the community. Our Alameda electrical contractors provide head-of-household wages, pensions, and full health care to their employees, as well as apprenticeship opportunity training at our local joint training facility, the Zero Net Energy Center, located here in Alameda County. We are in support of this entire project. A project like this will provide Alameda County construction electricians hundreds of jobs, keeping those earned dollars within Alameda County, positively impacting the economy. Quality work and experienced tradespeople are necessary on projects like this to meet those time deadlines and remain on budget. Moving forward with this project only benefits the community. So on behalf of NORCalNICA and our contractors, I thank you for your time today, and hope and urge you all to vote in favor of this real estate transaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hello. My name is Betsy Barrows. I have been a resident of Alameda County for twenty-two years. I'm here today to urge you to vote yes on the sale of the county's half of the Coliseum site to the Oakland As. The terms of the purchase exceed the fair market value, and the buyer has the capacity to close the transaction. This transaction allows the county to finally realize its stated desire to get out of the sports business and divest itself of the expenses related to the Coliseum site. Freed from the ongoing debt burden and operating losses of the Coliseum site, the county can redirect these resources to the urgent health and safety needs of the residents of Alameda County. The deal is compelling. The time is now, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next three names are Jorge Leon, Kathy Adams, Norman Hooks.
Good morning, and happy holidays, everyone. I'm Kathy Adams. I'm the president of the Oakland African American Chamber of Commerce, and also a founding member of the National Coalition for Hundred Black Women, and I'm also a business owner, CDA Consulting Group. I am an Alameda County resident, and I urge you to vote yes on this real estate transaction. The deal gets you out of the sports business. It's the right offer at the right time. The purchase price exceeds the far market value. With this transaction, you can now redirect the money that was being spent on the Coliseum site to meet the important health and safety needs in Alameda County, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Norman Hooks. I'm a resident of Alameda County and a practicing architect for some twenty years. I'm here in support of the project. I urge you to make this transaction happen, because I think it supports the long-range plans that the As have for both sites, in West Oakland and in East Oakland. I'm encouraged, as an urban designer, that the open space opportunities that will happen and the placemaking opportunities that will happen in both sites are going to be positive for the city of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Next three names are Philip Banta, Pastor Jennings, and Bob Jackson.
Members, my name is Philip Banta. I am the Director of the West Oakland Walk. The prior speaker is my co-director, and I actually bought some pamphlets describing the walk, that I've only bought four. There's five of you, so you can share them if you would. And I'm here to testify to the goodwill and integrity of the Oakland As and their engagement with the community regarding the community benefits agreement that is now being forged. Both Norman and I sit on the Community Benefits Agreement Committee. It's made up of community members and organizations that are trying to forge the list of benefits that are agreeable to both the community and to the As. And Norman and I, one of the benefits we're hoping for is that we're looking for support for the implementation of the West Oakland Walk. And the Oakland As actually reached out to us because they saw the West Oakland Walk as being complimentary to what they were proposing to do in West Oakland, and we see the same potential happening in East Oakland with this transaction that you are about to undertake. Namely, in the West Oakland Walk, the proposal is to create a loop of existing city streets, four and a half miles long, that ties together twenty-five different parks, twenty-three different publicly accessible places, and becomes a storyline for the history of Oakland in terms of its notable personalities who have contributed to the city, to the region, and to the country. The, their proposed stadium park really becomes the twenty-sixth park in that network of connections that we are making, and we see that the potential for the Coliseum site to become a kind of a canvas that the community can shape into a series of benefits for its immediate residents, both economically, culturally, and civically, to be the same type that we are looking to achieve in West Oakland. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Philip.
Good morning. Pastor LJ Jennings, pastor of Kingdom Builders Christian Fellowship here in Oakland, and president of the Bay Area Community Benefit Organization, which is an ecclesiastical body of churches, representing churches in Oakland and throughout Alameda County. Let me first start by saying that we certainly support the As remaining in the city of Oakland. There's no question about that. We really don't care where the As play, whether it's at Harvard Terminal or whether it's at the current Oakland Coliseum site. What we are concerned about and want to raise the concern is the issue of the potential and the real potential of continued displacement of black folks out of Oakland. That is a real concern. It's a real concern when we look out over these city walls right here and we see how the city has been sold out, and black population is down less than fifty percent of what it used to be. It's a real concern when we have policymakers that are creating policies and not really looking at the unintended consequences of the policies that we make as it relates to the, how it shapes the citizens of Oakland. It's a real concern when we think about this process of community benefits and how we bring, how we ask folks to come in and create community benefits, when in essence what that really is, is a way for big companies to buy the votes or buy the voices of those that come, because yes, we do need jobs, and yes, we do need, we do need to make sure that we have proper trails, and yes, we do need to make sure that we're looking out for some of the other things in the city of Oakland, but who's looking out for the people that reside here in the city of Oakland? The challenge is, is that a development at- The challenge is, is that a development at that Coliseum site, should they be successful in purchasing this site and moving to Harbor Terminal, will continue to displace black folk. There's no question about it. It's happened all around us, and I know that as policymakers, you see that happening. The $580 million that we all worked so hard on passing, how much of that really touched black folk? So when we think about, when we think about the things that we're talking about, and when we really think about selling public land, we need to be concerned about those individuals that are currently in this city and how it will affect whether they are able to remain in this city. Yes, we will have conversations with the A's, and yes, we will have conversations with other policymakers, and yes, we will do our due diligence to make sure that we protect the residents that are here in the city of Oakland. But let me be real clear, let me be very clear, that when we talk about, when we talk about black folk in Oakland, and we talk about the churches that represent the black folk in Oakland, that we're going to be vocal and we're going to be, we're going to make sure that we do what we can to protect those residents remaining in Oakland. It is, I'm not trying to make this a racial thing because that's not what this is about. Everybody's looking out for their own communities, but we're here to look out for the black community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hi, my name is Bishop Bob Jackson, pastor of Axwell Gospel Church in the city of Oakland. I'm here to lend my voice along with LJ, Pastor LJ, about the black community because what we're looking at right now is something that we saw, we've seen with San Francisco. We've seen the Candlestick move downtown, same, exact same scenario. And when you look back at the Candlestick where it used to be, now you see market rate houses going in and everything. Impacted Double Rock area, impacted the Hunter's Point area, and the prices of those places, those houses now have escalated to the point where African-American people can't even live in San Francisco. The population now of African-Americans in San Francisco is just a little under 3%. We don't want to see the same thing happen in the city of Oakland, and it seems like it's already underway for black people to be moved out in such a gentrification that we've never seen. I've been here over 70 years, been here all my life for the most part, and I hate to see that. We paid a tremendous price to put the Coliseum out in East Oakland. I remember when 98th Avenue was a single lane, and all the houses that were there, 73rd Avenue the same way. Those were black people that owned those houses. They had worked hard all their lives to afford those houses, and once they got it all together, they came in with eminent domain, moved those people out, gave them what they wanted to give them for the houses. They couldn't start all over again with the money they got, and we are afraid that the black community has paid a tremendous price for the Coliseum to be there in the first place. And now that it's moving out and you're selling the property to the A's, again, which we don't have a problem with it, problem we have is, we don't want to see the black community end up like San Francisco where we're under 3% as well. One time, we had 49% African-Americans in this city. Now today, it's around 23% and dropping. Black people are leaving the city because we can't afford to live here anymore. So we really need some understanding that this project is going to move, and the sale of the property is going to move, but we really want to be recognized that the African-American community has contributed a whole lot with the city of Oakland and Alameda County, and we just respect the right to still live here.
Thank you, Bishop. Next three speakers, Lawrence Van Hook, Elaine Brown, Wayling Huber.
To the council, to the supervisors, I'm a part of the last two speakers, Berry Benefit Organization, Dr. Lawrence Van Hook, pastor of the West Oakland Church, Community Church in West Oakland. I'm also an adjunct professor at the Community College, community organizer, wear quite a few hats. I wanted to get up to talk about the impact of our community as it relates to big business. I was on the phone talking with a friend of mine in Inglewood, California, that have been impacted with big business when it came to the Coliseum, that have totally nullified the community in Inglewood. It is atrocious of what happened to the neighborhood and the impact of the African-Americans who lived in that neighborhood. As a faith leader, we just don't deal with people's spiritual well-being, but we also have to deal with the economic stability, we have to deal with the educational wherewithal, and the sustainability of the families that impact the communities where we live, work, and worship. I'm also, and we also know the impact of what happened to Candlestick Park. Anytime big business and the A's and that property is big business, as soon as big business comes in, other businesses with the same kind of impact to, that want to follow big business, literally move the gentrification project up, the agenda up, and we no longer can survive and afford to live in the neighborhood where there is not the community benefit in a real way. And what I'm asking, even though we do support this move, we can't wait until the deal is done. We need the A's today to commit to a higher vendor pool that include the people in our community. Today, we need to talk about the, not only the vendors, but the contractors, all of the people that would benefit the community in whole. We need to start right now. And I'm hoping, and I understand that it's a land acquisition and the city has its part, but we cannot wait until the ball gets to rolling. And once this big machine go, start moving, we cannot stop it from moving. That impacts our community and the people who don't have a voice, the people who do not have the ability to make the decisions at this high level. So I'm hoping that we start now and making the difference with the impact of the Oakland A's before we get started. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. My name is Elaine Brown. I'm a resident of Oakland and obviously therefore Alameda County. I'm also the CEO of Oakland and the World Enterprises, which is developing two properties, one in West Oakland and one in East Oakland, both fully affordable. One is a rehab project for 102 seniors who are all poor and low income, and the other one is 79 units of housing, 49 Section 8 houses, and all affordable. So I have a real interest in West and East Oakland. I don't think it's a West or East Oakland issue. I think it is an Oakland issue. And my interest in the black community of Oakland goes back to the days of the Black Panther Party when I was a leader, and when the Black Panther Party is the last thing we had standing that would actually do something about the status of black people in the city of Oakland. Gentrification, this city has been going on for more than 20 years, and we're now just discussing how to hold it back. There are many other things that need to be done. This black community has not been served by the Coliseum, whoever has owned it. It has not been served by the port. It has not been served by West Oakland developers, some of whom would transport coal through the black community that has high asthma rates in West Oakland. This is an opportunity for us to perhaps, perhaps, develop something that may be good for the black community. So I believe that I have an interest in what happens in the black community and a claim on being as black as everybody else who's black in this room. This county does not want the Coliseum. It doesn't want to continue to be in the sports business, so the only issue is whether or not it wants, it can make a deal here. Nobody else has got $85 million that I know of to buy this. I don't want to see a developer come in and do something different with it. Someone is here prepared to do something, and we can only assume and hope and pressure and believe that there will be something better than what has existed today. And so I think that the purchase has to be made or the deal has to be sealed because it is going to potentially benefit the black community that has not been benefited, certainly not by the city of Oakland's money, which has done zero, especially in West Oakland, which has tremendous so-called gentrification displacement of black people since the days of the Black Panther Party when 70-some percent of West Oakland was black, now down to 20-some. I'm trying to hold the line, and I believe that I can begin to deal with a group that wants to do something in West Oakland and that will do something, and so I hope that you will go forward with this deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Your comments resonate with this supervisor. Wayling, your comments resonate with me. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisors, my name is Wayling Huber. Thank you for the time to speak today. I represent the food service workers out at the Oakland Coliseum. We have 615 members. They make over $16 an hour at a minimum and up to $20 an hour plus tips in various classifications. The A's have made sure for decades that any contractor that they bring in to run their food service out at the Coliseum is a responsible contractor that provides good jobs, that respects people's seniority. Even when they change contractors, all the workers carry over from one contractor to another, as well as their seniority rights. 40% of them have been there for more than 10 years. 175 of our members have health care for themselves and their families, paid vacation, retirement, and 51% of our members are African-American, 80% of them are residents of Alameda County. We support the A's staying in Oakland. They've even gone so far as to agree in advance that if the stadium moves to Howard Terminal, that all the workers will once again move regardless of the contractor with the, with the team and continue to enjoy the benefits that they've had. Furthermore, we have an agreement with the A's that any developers or anybody that they work with to expand our hospitality work within the city of Oakland will also be responsible employers and will make sure that workers have the right to form a union if they choose to do so without fear of employer retaliation. And so we want to support this sale, and we're also members, you might hear as members of Oakland United Coalition, who like the speakers who were right before me, are working with the A's to negotiate a community benefits agreement that would include items such as local hire. One of our contractors in the food service also already has an agreement with us that any new positions get first offered to Oakland and Alameda residents, including disadvantaged workers having a priority. And so agreements like that can carry over, are being negotiated now in the other parts of the projects, along with affordable housing and environmental impacts. So we look forward to having an enforceable agreement that includes all of those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayling. Next speaker is Liz Ortega Toro and Salvin Hauser, and then Dave Cavall.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Liz Ortega Toro, Executive Secretary/Treasurer of the Alameda Labor Council, representing 135,000 workers in Alameda County. I'm here today in support of this sale. It's a great step in the right direction to make sure that the Oakland State, the A's stay in Oakland and that we have good union jobs across Alameda County. I would also look forward to working with the A's in partnership to develop a community benefits agreement that is beneficial to all of Alameda County. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Liz. Mr. Calon.
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to thank all the supervisors. This has been a long process this year, but we've actually come to a great outcome. I want to thank all the staff for their hard work. Aki, Pat, Andrea, Susan, everyone. It's been a long process, but one that really has a true win-win for this community, for Alameda County, and obviously for the A's, and ensuring that we're here for another 50 or 100 years in this community. So thank you so much for your leadership. This is a great day, historic day. I appreciate everything that you guys have done. This means a lot to this community, and it means a lot to a community asset, the Oakland A's, which does so much for Alameda County. So thank you so much, and I respectfully ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers from the public that would like to be heard? Vice President Carson.
Well, I wanted to ask the previous speaker a question.
Yes, Keith.
One is I personally appreciate your ongoing effort as a representative of the A's and also the A's organization to attempt to be always open for community engagement. And I know you've been having ongoing meetings in different parts of the community around this effort, not just down in West Oakland, but throughout Oakland. So I want to say I really appreciate it, and you've been one of the franchises that has consistently been available to community, and I want to underscore that. On the issues that have been talked about by the last three, the last three or four speakers, in a more fundamental way, how do you see going forward engaging in a real way the concerns that have been raised, especially with respect to equity in terms of hiring, contracting, and most of all displacement of individuals through all of the new development that's going on? We know that most of the construction in the city of Oakland unfortunately is more than 85% market rate and displacing a lot of individuals who have been here for 50, 75, 100 years. So other than the trust me factor, what would you say towards the efforts to ensure that the outcome, to the best of your ability and your participation, has minimal effect on what we have been experiencing up to now with all of the new development?
Well, I think the point you've raised and that the community has raised is a serious one, and it's one that we need to deal with head-on. And I'm hopeful that our project, the two projects we have, obviously the one at the waterfront and then the Coliseum, can be done in a way that can actually be beneficial to the local communities. I think the community benefits process we've undertaken on the Howard Terminal site is a good example of, you know, the fact that, one, we're using a race and equity lens to determine a baseline and an understanding of, hey, what are the different groups that could be either displaced or negatively affected by the project? And what are the ways that a community benefits process and dollars can be put in place to build that equity in those communities? And so we've committed to that process, which is kind of groundbreaking in West Oakland, and I would say that we would want to carry that forward at the time that we would actually develop the Coliseum. We'd obviously still have to get a deal with the city, but we would commit to a similar type of process to ensure that there is a community benefits agreement that works for all parties, that the local community is actually benefited by the project, and that the money is spent in a way that helps the communities that have been there for 20, 30, 40 years. I think what makes us different is that we've, we've been in that community for 53 years. You know, we're not someone who's just coming there. We have a longstanding history. I think in the near term, we can do a better job of obviously engaging different and local minority-owned businesses and hiring practices and really practicing better diversity and inclusion in our business, and that could actually be kind of a lighthouse for other businesses and other arrangements. And even today, we had a great meeting with some of the faith-based community, and we're going to set up monthly meetings to ensure that those groups and ourselves are not only talking, but actually getting down to real business and engaging on things in the interim. So I think those are some of the key areas that we hope to address some of these concerns. We can't solve everything ourselves, but maybe we can be a catalyst or part of the solution.
I agree with you, and I appreciate your response. I know you can't solve everything yourself. I mean, our county was very fortunate because the voters entrusted and saw that it was important to pass a $580 million affordable housing bond, and did so by two-thirds voting margin, which is unprecedented. One of the things that we've been working on through that fund, but with other entities, is making sure that there's an innovation fund there, a displacement fund for helping to try to keep residents who are here, here, those who are still trying to struggle to hold on to their property, possible incentives to participate in the fund, but also take on another tenant that might be a person that is right on the verge of being displaced. I'm not sure if I've heard through earlier discussions, any of that has been a part of the entertainment of addressing this holistically, not just of the A's themselves, but holistically.
We'd be very open to engaging on the innovation fund and seeing ways that could plug into the, both of our projects. And so I think that sounds like a great approach, and I would welcome an introduction and kind of an understanding of how to implement that. and kind of an understanding of how to implement that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Supervisor Miley.
Yes, Mr. Kaval alluded to the fact that earlier he and representatives from the A's sat down with the Bay Area Community Benefit Organization, made up of some of the clergy that are in the room today, to talk about some of the issues around African-Americans, around displacement, around gentrification, et cetera, and how the A's can begin to work in a more concerted way, in a more formal way, in a more binding way of addressing that, and not just as it relates to the Coliseum itself, but the entire community. So, I know, and he mentioned it, there'll be a series of meetings starting next month with the Bay Area Community Benefit Organization, the clergy, to begin to look at strategies and approaches that might be utilized in order to address that particular issue and concern, because we really feel that collaboratively, we can make this a win-win situation and that this can be, you know, we can do it differently here than ever been done, not just in the city of Oakland, but in the state and potentially in the nation. So, Mr. Kaval has made that commitment to the Bay Area Community Benefit Organization.
Supervisor Chan.
I, see, I had one question. So, in addition to the eighty-five million dollars, the deal also includes around five million dollars to pay for operations, right, that the county currently gives to the JPA? Is that correct?
Once we get beyond the due diligence period, if the deal is moving forward with a green light, then one of the obligations that the CWP group is committed to is paying for the annual subsidy or shortfall in operations expenses that currently the city and the county share. They would be paying for our portion of that cost. A conservative estimate places that in the realm of five million dollars on an annual basis. So, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, just by way of comment, I think we've had a lot of meetings in this room around the A's, right? And a lot of times, our board would say this is Groundhog Day because we never thought we could get anything done. And so, I think this is a very important decision that we're making today and also something that's gonna, that I feel is very positive, because there are a lot of people who said this, you know, nothing would ever happen. As I said, we've seen so many parties at the table. So, I want to thank the community and Mr. Kaval and the A's for making this happen. I think that, from my point of view, I think it is a gift to the residents of Alameda County and Oakland in the sense that if everything goes smoothly, which I assume it will, that operations will be covered, there'll be a payment of eighty-five million dollars coming to the county. And we were very serious four years ago when we said that we really need revenues to pay for our core services. We don't really want to be in the sports business. We have so many other things that we have to cover: housing, homeless, mental health, and food, all those kind of things. So, I think this is really a great opportunity for us to do that. I think in terms of the housing, we're going to take your word for the fact that you're going to negotiate a good community benefits package. As Supervisor Carson said, A1 is probably the biggest chunk of money that has been, has gone for low-income housing. And I don't know the numbers in terms of African-Americans, but I do know that Oakland funded the Coliseum Connections, which is out in East Oakland, the Embark Project on Martin Luther King Way, West MacArthur Project, Thirty-Second and San Pablo. So, many of those are in affected communities. I don't know the numbers because there were lotteries for all of those, but I think it's beyond question that this board has a commitment to making sure that residents who have lived in the community for a long time continue to live here. We really value the diversity of the community. And last but not least, we want the A's to stay in Oakland. They had a great year this year, and two teams have already left, and we really look forward. The fan base is very enthusiastic about it, creates jobs, creates excitement, keeps Oakland on the map in terms of national standing. So, I just want to thank everyone who was involved, and I think that we really, really need to move forward on this.
Supervisor Miley.
Yeah, I just want to move to close the public hearing, then I'd like to speak to the matter.
Let's move aside into closing the public hearing, seeing no opposition. We will come back to the supervisor. Supervisor Miley.
Yes, I thank President Baye. I want to thank the folks who came today to speak on this particular issue. This is historic, as has been pointed out. This is a, I mean, we call this a BFD, you know? But we're not going to be vulgar or anything, but this is a, you know, this is a BFD. This is very huge. I mean, the county has been in the sports business for over fifty years, for over fifty years. I chaired the Joint Powers Authority starting in 2012 after Supervisor Steele left the Board of Supervisors. The Coliseum's in my district. I've watched the issues around the Coliseum ever since I've been on the City Council because it was in my district when I was a City Council person as well. Coliseum has been an area, and I'm not just talking about the Coliseum itself, I'm talking about the entire Coliseum area, it's been an area that could rival the downtown in its potential and its capacity. You know, there's Amtrak, the train, the airport's not too far, major highway, Bard, et cetera. It's in a significant strategic location. The mere fact that we lost two teams, the Raiders and the Warriors, it's unfortunate that we lost those teams, but I attribute some of that to the fact that we've had a three-headed monster. We've had the city, the county, and the Joint Powers Authority trying to make decisions around stadium deals out there on the property. And that's been almost impossible to try to come to something that would be conducive to the taxpayers, the fans, and the interest of the public entities as well as sports teams. So, we've lost two, but we are able now to retain the Oakland A's. When we were able to secure the extension of the Oakland A's to a ten-year license agreement a number of years ago, that signaled the ability of the public entities, particularly the county, to work in a collaborative way with the Oakland A's to move an agenda. And we've been working in that collaborative way ever since. You know, both Supervisor Hagerty and I serve on the Joint Powers Authority for the Coliseum and the arena, and we've been working with our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors to move that agenda along. So, as has been pointed out, it's been very frustrating over the last five or six years because the county has expressed any number of times our desire to get out of the sports business. We've decided we would sell our interest to the city of Oakland. We've been in negotiations with the city of Oakland. It couldn't come to, it just couldn't materialize. The city, and I'm not throwing the city in the bus, and I don't want to say anything derogatory about the city, but it just couldn't materialize. And the position was, if the city couldn't buy us out, could the A's buy us out? And the A's stepped forward through this partnership, the Coliseum Way Partners, and they are prepared to buy the county's interest so the county can direct its attention to providing services to vulnerable populations as opposed to being in sports business. None of us were here when the decision was made with the city and the county to jointly have that property and have sports out there. That decision was made more than fifty years ago. Now, we're at this juncture in time, and we think it's in the best interest of the county to get out of the sports business and get out of it in a responsible way. And this is a responsible way, eighty-five million dollars. We're getting our value for the property. We're going to be able to retire our bonded indebtedness. After we retire our bonded indebtedness, we're still going to have proceeds left over from the sale of the property that can be utilized for other services. We're doing it in a very responsible way. We've tied in what we're going to do to the A's staying in the city of Oakland. If they don't build at Howard Terminal, then they have a landing spot back at the Coliseum, which is really, really important because without a landing spot, if the, doesn't materialize out of the, at the Howard Terminal, then the A's, you know, based on the scarcity of land, property values, this, that, and the other, they could be out of the city of Oakland if they don't have a place to land. This assures them that they have a place to land. This assures them that they have a home in Oakland at the Coliseum should things not pan out at the Howard Terminal. So, that's in the public good, that's in the public interest. I think that's extremely important. So, I just think moving this deal forward has been a dream come true. This is a great Christmas present. As I said, this is a BFD. And I'm trying, not trying to be vulgar, but everyone knows what I'm saying. I know, I said this the third time, but it is, and it's very historic. And keep in mind, the next ninety day, one hundred and ninety days is a due diligence period. This action takes us one step forward. It keeps the ball advancing down the field. We haven't won the game yet, you know, we haven't, the ballgame's not over, and it won't be over until the due diligence period's over and the A's start paying, and we've done the quick, they start paying, and then they pay this, and then we do the quick claim date come roughly 2026. So, there's a lot to be done, and depending on what happens with the site down at Howard Terminal, there could be any number of things that could happen out of the Coliseum. But we are definitely committed to making sure that the people in East Oakland who have experienced the A's, the family-friendly, the, both family-friendly as well as the inexpensive ability to go to A's games, and the fact that the community needs to gain from the actions of the county, we're definitely committed to ensuring that that continues and that this action that the county takes today puts us on the path to create a legacy project out at the Coliseum that people will look back twenty, thirty years from now and say, we did it right. And that's the important thing, because I've been elected official for ten years there and nearly twenty years here. I think I've done a lot of good things. There've been a few things that I, you know, I regret and I would take back, but just a few, not many, just a few. I think this is going to be something that'll prove to be one of the more significant, great things that we've done, and we definitely want to have a legacy project that we can look back and be proud of. So, I just want to thank the Oakland A's, Coliseum Way Partners, for the work that you've done, working with our team, hanging in there with us on this particular matter, looking at the threats of lawsuit and the fact that we were able to get the city to withdraw its lawsuit, thankfully with the support of Major League Baseball. Because I know Supervisor Hagerty and I, we know for a fact, when Manfred was the attorney for Major League Baseball, he said he wanted to keep the A's here in Oakland. And he said if he became the commissioner, he would, you know, he would ensure that that happened, and that's what's happening. The commissioner is fulfilling his promise to us, and we're now prepared to take that next step to keep this effort moving forward so we can finally achieve what we think is going to be in the best interest of everyone and truly make this a collaborative win-win situation. Thanks.
Any other comments by supervisors? Any other comments? Yep. Supervisor Hagerty.
Thank you. Question and some comments. I just want to make sure, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this and all the reading I've done, the discussions I've done with the attorneys and everything, but I want to make sure this is on the record. No way what we do today will affect the obligation of the Warriors and what they continue to owe this county.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Well, having said that, I do want to thank staff for the work that they've done, really have turned over every stone to make sure that each and every time we turn left or right, that we are operating in the correct way. You know, I remember back some sixty years when that, mostly the arena was being built because I remember driving up 880 as a young man. I wasn't driving, my dad was driving, thinking it was a big water tank. And in a way, it's kind of sad to know that today the county is getting out of this. So, I approach it with two emotions, to be honest with you. In a way, I'm a bit sad, but in a way, I'm extremely thankful. I think that what we are doing today is really getting back to the mission of the county. And more importantly, it seems like through the history of this, that I've been on the board anyways, and the dealings with the sports teams and anybody else that becomes involved with the arena or the Coliseum, the constant complaint seems to be the, I think he called it the monster, I call it the three-legged stool. And the fact that you can get an agreement with the city, but if you don't get it with the county, you don't have an agreement, which makes it extremely cumbersome. And I think that that kind of led to maybe the Raiders situation. I still can't explain to you why the Warriors left. The Warriors had no reason to leave this community because the Warriors were supported by this community even when they were not a good team. So, I, you know, I won't go off on that, but it was an extremely disappointing situation for me when the Warriors left. But having said that, even recently, you know, we've been criticized by the newspapers, but then when we go and forward and say we want to sell the property, the newspapers, they criticize us. I don't know how they can criticize us, to be very honest with you. And in fact, you know, many people know that I've decided not to run for reelection. There's now somebody running for my seat that says he's against the A's deal. Well, probably doesn't even know the A's deal, probably hasn't read the A's deal and doesn't understand it. Because really, it's not our mission to provide an arena or a stadium where people play baseball is. And it is healthcare, it is social services, it is foster care, it is all the things that come along with being a county supervisor. So, I think today's vote is what's going to get us back to becoming county supervisors. You know, somebody said that today's action gets us out of the sports business. And yes, we need to be out of the sports business. I was talking to my son-in-law the other day, and he was asking me, you know, how much will you lose because the A's leave? And I said, you know, it's not so much what we would lose in financial dollars, but it's the civic pride. This is the last sports team that brings credibility to this community, and it's important that we do everything that we can do to make sure that they stay here. And if it's the county stepping aside, then that's what should happen. Some of the other concerns that I think I have, and I appreciate the good pastors coming down and talking to us today, but I think the biggest problem for us, although we can help influence, we don't control the land use at that facility. And that's been some of the most difficult situations. Here we are, we're a half-owner, but yet we don't control anything. And I think it is time that we step aside so the A's can have those very definitive conversations on how can they move forward with that piece of property, and the city can say, yes, we like the idea, or no, we don't like the idea, and we just sit on the sidelines and say, well, Jesus, it's up to you guys. So, I think that as we move forward today, it is bittersweet, but it is the right thing to do. And I think that's what's important. And it's not only the right thing to do to keep the A's, it's the right thing to do for us as county supervisors and making sure that we ensure the health and services here are available to the people that we represent. Also, I think, you know, from the day that I've gotten here, I've always cared about the county's fiscal health. Well, you heard today that not only will we be able to pay our portion of the debts, but we will no longer be responsible for the operating deficits that happens on a year-end basis when in fact we can put that five million dollars or five million dollars plus towards services within this community. And that's what's important to us as county supervisors. So, I'm extremely excited. Supervisor Chan referred to it as Groundhog Day. I've done that many a times, and I'm really, I'm ready to throw dirt in that hole and make sure it doesn't come up again.
Supervisor Chan.
I just forgot one thing. I would really, I just want to go on the record to encourage the Oakland City Council to approve the de-feasement of the bonds, because we can't, we can't do that unless they agree to do that. And I would, hopefully, that would happen sooner than later. I heard the mayor this morning, and she said that she thought this was a good deal, basically. And I want to thank her for that, but the council's going to have to step forward and make that approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaval, for nine months of negotiations. We sincerely appreciate your team, what you've done. Everyone in the community is watching. We'll see what the next step is, and best wishes to the city of Oakland and people. We'll see what the next step is, and best wishes to the city of Oakland and people who deserve a great benefit from this transaction moving forward. I'm hoping for a motion on a resolution. Supervisor Miley?
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution making findings of economic opportunity pursuant to Government Code Section 52201, also approve the disposition agreement between the county of Alameda and Coliseum Way Partners to sell the county's undivided half-interest in the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum complex, and that we authorize the President of the Board to sign the agreement.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no opposition. The item is approved. Five A's. Congratulations to the great city of Oakland. Thank you very much. No public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no public comment. Thank you. We're adjourned. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.